of Education will now come to order. If you all would please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Irving, roll call, please.
Mr. McCutcheon.
Present.
Mr. Gliotti.
Here.
Mr. Lane.
Here.
Mrs. Dalton.
Here.
Mrs. Coke.
Here.
Number four, I'm looking for a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second. Any comments, corrections, questions about the agenda? Hearing none, Ms. Irving.
Mr. Lane.
Yes.
Mrs. Coke.
Yes.
Mrs. Dalton.
Yes.
Mr. Gliotti.
Yes.
Mr. McCutcheon.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Number five, communications reports, presentation of our invited guests. I will turn this over to Mr. Severs.
Yeah, so I'm gonna start tonight and read a little bit of what I, actually, I'll just read what I said last week at the banquet. So we have with us this evening the 2025 Franklin B. Walter Award recipient Callahan, or Callie Carroll. Welcome, Callie. We were able to celebrate her and all the other Warren County honorees two weeks ago, I think it was. And so part of our job is to get up and introduce them. It was a great opportunity to have lunch that day, wonderful ceremony. But I wrote this about Callahan. Callahan represents the very best of what we hope for in our students. She personifies our district's mission of being reflective, respectful, and responsible in all that she does. A standout in the classroom and the community, Callie has demonstrated a deep commitment to learning, leading, and serving. Values that not only align with our district's mission, but also the University of Dayton's motto, where she will continue her academic journey this fall. I said at the ceremony that day, I'm not sure how many 18-year-old kids know their college mission and motto, but it was something that she wrote about in her essay, and I thought it was really appropriate. Also exciting that she's continuing the legacy of both of her parents and her older brother in attending UD. At UD, Callie plans to major in medicinal, pharmaceutical chemistry and minor in business, an ambitious and intentional path that will lay the foundation for her ultimate goal of becoming a patent attorney. Her love for science was sparked and was continued to be sparked in AP chemistry, as evidenced by her selection of Mr. Tom Heffel as her teacher of recognition, while her passion for business grew throughout her leadership as an officer in her FBLA chapter at Lebanon High School. But Callie's impact reaches far beyond academics. She's a servant leader, actively involved in community service initiatives with the National Honor Society Blood Drive, Freshman Focus, Hope Squad, and other regular volunteering at the Lebanon Food Pantry. Her heart for service paired with her drive to learn and lead.
I don't underst-
Make her, I'm sorry, Siri. Her heart for service paired with her drive to lead and lerve make her an inspiring example for all of our students. So I just wanted, we wanted to invite you to here this evening, get a photo with you and the Board of Education, and just formally recognize you for this honor. You get a scholarship out of it. Would you like to stand up and say anything about your selection for this or recognize Mr. Heffel in any way?
Just thank you for the opportunity to be here. It was a very big honor to be recognized as a scholarship.
You're absolutely welcome, and you're well deserved. It was a great meal that day, too, wasn't it?
It was.
It was awesome. So we had a really good student-prepared meal from a program at CHCA, and it was possibly one of the best meals I've had in a very long time. It was actually very, very good. So if you want to come forward, board members, if we're gonna step out, we'll take a photo with her. And I just appreciate you being here this evening. This is short and sweet, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I listened to Ms. Rosen.
I'll be the chair.
You're welcome to stick around for the next exciting portions, but the next thing might be really good, and then after that, it's gonna be all business. So you make a decision from that point.
Are you saying Isaac's part's not very good?
Well, yeah, but Isaac speaks, too. Maybe leave after Isaac.
All right, our second dedication, I'm turning over to Ms. Birkin. You stepped, yep, you got it.
Thank you for having us here tonight. We started these awards in 2019 when I took over the LHS Yearbook class. So what we do is we recognize local businesses and organizations, community members and staff who have been impactful and influential to the students and faculty at Lebanon High School. It's no surprise to hear some of the past winners, including Girdwood Orthodontics, Neighborhood Bridges, the Lebanon Athletic Boosters, Fort Paul's Animal Hospital, and Joshua's Place. Bart and Eileen Girdwood, Bill Kilgallen, Judy Conrad, Matt and Barbie Warmeyer, Esther Larson, these are all names that mean a lot to us as staff at Lebanon High School. Staff of the Year, Eileen Nielsen, Bunny Brooks, Scott Butler, Brenda Kimberlin, and Lisa Thering. As I call your name, please come up here to be recognized, receive your award, and get your photo taken for the yearbook. The dedication page is the very first page in the yearbook. You will receive a copy of the yearbook this fall for you to remember the impact that you have had at LHS. Thank you to the Board of Education for allowing our program to come here tonight to present the awards. First, our Local Business/Organization of the Year, we'd like to welcome up Mike Lane to represent Witz Frozen Custard. From the Athletic Department, they would like to recognize that Witz partners with the Athletic Department in an effort to increase student attendance and involvement in the Witz War Zone. At home football and basketball games, cheerleaders toss numbered footballs or T-shirts into the student section. The announcer draws a number, gifting the winner 20 cups of custard for them and their friends to enjoy, and occasionally me if they give me one. Witz is sold at the concession stand for home events year-round. They are a sponsor for the Athletic Department, donating to the Athletic Booster efforts to improve facilities and enhance student-athlete experience. Mike has worked on and attended booster events, including the annual fundraising gala, back-to-school meet-the-team events, and the annual Hometown Spirit 5K run walk. Kalen King, Assistant Athletic Director, stated, "Mike Lane is at many home events. He does a great job keeping up to date on team success, and he continues to look for ways to support LHS. He supports the students that he has hired as staff and enjoys seeing their involvement in LHS events, even at Powder Puff Football when they're against each other during one of the busiest weeks of the fall." From the After Prom Committee, Witz donated the grand prize for after prom, a $1,000 Best Buy gift card. All seniors in attendance were entered and looked forward to seeing who would win. Parents work on securing donations like this and prizes to students who attend the event, allowing for a safe and supervised environment after prom each spring. From the staff at LHS, Witz sponsors the Staff and Student of the Month awards, which are given out to impactful and involved members of LHS. This year, Witz Performer of the Month was added, allowing us to spotlight performing arts students and their involvement at LHS in the classroom and beyond. Mike Lane worked with head football coach Micah Fowler this fall to show appreciation and support for the LHS marching band. The football players showed up and scooped custard for the marching warriors at practice that was donated by Witz. They got to stay and watch their hard work as Director Michelle Crockett led the band in a run-through performance of their competition show. Witz has partnered with student groups at LHS to host fundraisers in-store, with a percentage of menu sales donated back to that organization. This year, organizations included the Lebanon Band Parents Association, FBLA, Lebanon Christmas for Tots, youth volleyball, youth basketball, got to participate and benefited from that partnership. From Just How to Show, Witz, as well as Mike and Amy, always support our students and staff. They donated coupons to our Hope Squad to pass out at different events. They are at many sporting events, helping out with concessions, setting up, tearing down, helping wherever they can whenever they can. They show up to local events to support other local businesses. They embrace warrior pride in all that it encompasses. Witz is an annual sponsor of the LHS Yearbook. We are thankful for the dedication of Mike and those at Witz who are a part of the team that supports the students and staff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, for our Community Members of the Year, we're gonna welcome up Rosie Vandegrift. Tonight, Rosie is accepting the award for her and her late husband Jim, and their support of Lebanon City Schools. These allergies. A tradition that began just a few years ago has turned into one that is creating a lasting impact on the bond that LHS and our biggest supporters have with one another. Tonight, to highlight the level of support that is provided by Jim and Rosie Vandegrift, I'd like to share a nomination from teacher Connie Dooning. "To know Jim and Rosie is to know a piece of Lebanon. They have attended so many games, events, programs, and have continued to support the efforts of the Athletic Department and Hall of Fame organization. They have given their time on the sidelines, behind the scenes, at the microphone, in meetings, and to fundraise for efforts that have continuously and steadily propelled Lebanon schools forward. They are deserving of recognition, and thanks for all they have done." LHS teacher and cross-country coach Mark Birkin said, "Jim was the starter of the home cross-country meet when I began coaching at Lebanon 10 years ago. With his longtime involvement in sports, it was evident that he loved to see how Lebanon was doing, and he loved to see his granddaughter's success in the sport. But he also made it known that there's too much time between races, making sure to check his watch to get home to Rosie for a Saturday of college football. Jim and Rosie found ways to work with the Athletic Department on projects, big and small, general and specific, always showing constant support. Whether it was being a member of the Stadium Renovation Committee in the Legacy Project, involvement in the Athletic Hall of Fame, being faithful fans in maroon in their reserved seats at the stadium, Jim and Rosie were always there. It was only fitting that after his services were hosted at the DPC, his grandchildren escorted him on his final lap at the stadium, being cheered on by Warrior fans, staff, alumni, and members of the church and community where they served. This fall, they had 1,000 athletic schedules printed into a wallet-sized bi-fold and donated them to the Athletic Department to be passed out to staff, coaches, families, and supporters of athletics. A small gesture, but one that people held on to and were thankful to have accessible." Keith Pantling, Athletic Director, said, "The amount of games that Jim and Rosie attended is impressive. Between volleyball, basketball, football, and track, they genuinely enjoyed coming to support the Warriors. For Jim to be involved in so many aspects, we are thankful, but also thankful to Rosie for letting him miss time at home to attend meetings, be on selection committees, and work to propel Lebanon's athletic facilities forward. Both of your dedication to the Warriors will be remembered and talked about fondly. Thank you for cheering on the Warriors at the events that you attended and all that you've done for our community."
Thank you.
These allergies.
Our Staff Member of the Year, Marty Collier.
For 34 years, Marty Collier has been more than just a science teacher at Lebanon High School. He has been a source of knowledge, laughter, and unwavering dedication. His unique sense of humor has left a lasting impression on students and staff alike. Whether cracking jokes in the classroom or keeping colleagues entertained in the hallways, Marty's presence has made LHS a better place. LHS Secretary Kerry Hoyt said, "Beyond the classroom, Marty's passion for science is evident in the unexpected deliveries he receives. The front office staff never knows what might arrive for him. Often boxes labeled 'living creature, open immediately' cause quite the stir, especially for the student aides tasked with the delivery." His enthusiasm for hands-on learning has created unforgettable experiences for students and kept curiosity alive at LHS. Head boys track coach and LHS teacher Jason Simcoe said, "When I tell parents, community members, friends, and others why I love Lebanon High School, I tell them it's because of the wonderful people here. When I think of the wonderful people..." of the wonderful people here. When I think of the wonderful people, I think of Marty Collier first. Marty is an amazing teacher, a fantastic coach, and a great friend. Rarely will you catch Marty without a smile on his face as he walks our halls. He loves our subject, his subject. Anybody who walks around with a rat climbing on his shoulder must love teaching biology. He loves the people around him, and if you've ever had the pleasure of hearing one of his jokes, you see the joy he has in interacting with others. I've been fortunate to spend the last 12 years coaching alongside Marty, watching him impact the lives of hundreds of track athletes. I've seen him celebrate with high fives, physically lifting kids up with a hug, a fist bump, or a smile when they're in tears, feeling like they have failed. Lebanon High School will not be the same without Marty." Marty's been involved at LHS in many events, activities, programs, and committees. He may not want to be in the spotlight, but we are happy to have him here tonight. His science colleagues nominated him for Witz Staff of the Month, which he received earlier this year, and the Yearbook Staff of the Year with these kind words. Paula Hogan said, "If a student or staff member is in need, Marty quietly and without fanfare or expectation of recognition helps fill those needs." Diane Rogers said, "Marty is a walking encyclopedia of scientific knowledge. He gets so excited about science and brings this excitement and a sense of humor to the classroom." Cam Auer said, "Marty is one of a kind. Throughout his 34 years of service to the district, he has done amazing things for our students and staff. He has held the Science Department together for the last 15 years. He rarely misses a day of school. He is always calm, cool, and collected. He truly cares about the people he interacts with on a regular basis. He goes the extra mile to make sure students and the members of his department are all taken care of to the best of his abilities." Nominations from students poured in by the dozens, each showing appreciation for Mr. Collier. "He is the most patient teacher I've ever had in terms of teaching the material." Mr. Collier deserves to be recognized because every morning for biology, he would come in and make a dad joke and try to make everyone's morning start on a positive note. Most of the time, nobody would laugh, but he never stopped because he didn't do it for validation. He did it because he knew we all secretly enjoyed it. So they did enjoy it." Coach Collier makes a point to encourage us at track, balancing getting better with form, technique, handoffs, but also allowing us to have fun. He presents his lessons in a down-to-earth, understandable way, making complex subjects seem simple, and he does it with passion. It seems like he's never had a bad day. He's always smiling or making jokes that lighten everybody's mood. He's a good role model for the teachers at LHS. He shows maturity, leadership, and remembers to have fun while teaching. He's very funny. He makes class time enjoyable while also teaching effectively. I'd like to thank him because I got a four on my AP Bio test. I am sad to see him retire, but after all of his hard work, he deserves it. And his jokes really are funny. Congratulations, Marty. 28 more days of school, 28 more dad jokes, 10 more track meets, one more to host. You got this. Two more to host. You got this. And if I could have our recipients and their invited guests step out to the hall to take some pictures, I would appreciate that. Thank you, guys, for coming. Thank you again for allowing us to go.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
There's a couple. So we'll just move along. Gosh, I feel lonely now. B, Hearing of the Public, we have none. So we will move to Item C. We'll hear from our Student Body President, Number Three on the Football Field, Number One in Our Hearts, Isaac Parlett.
I don't know how you're going to beat that.
Shame they're not here. All right, first off, we have our Presidential Scholarship recipient. LHS senior Rosie Brinkman has been awarded the Presidential Scholarship to Mount St. Joseph University that equals four years of full tuition. She was surprised, well, not this week anymore, by President H.J. Williams, Chris Powers, the Vice President for Enrollment, and mascot Joe Lyon. Congrats.
Is Florida State's, their president and their mascot going to come up for you?
Probably not, but we'll see, hopefully.
That would have been awesome.
All right, well, we pretty much already went over this one. I don't know if there's any more information in this one.
Just pointing out in the picture, our state representatives and senators were there, so she had some proclamations from them, and really a great opportunity for us to celebrate one of our best students, so.
Next up is our Spring Athletic Signing. Five more athletes from the Class 2025 were able to continue their athletic and academic careers at the next level. We had Kayla Casserly for cheer at Eastern Kentucky University, Zade Avanport for football and track at Mount St. Joe, Dylan Stallings for lacrosse at Anderson University, Max Walker for soccer at Mount Vernon Nazarene, and Colton Cannon for baseball at Olney Community College.
Dylan Stallings' kid is really brilliant. He's going to a great university there. It's the home of Isaac Severs also.
Oh, really?
Just wanted to point that out.
We have the UC IT Expo. The Lebanon High School IT Program had a fantastic experience at the IT Expo at UC. Students explored innovative IT companies, discussed advancements in the tech field, and connected with peers from other high schools. A highlight of the event was engaging with UC seniors as they presented their impressive IT capstone projects. LHS was on the news. LHS senior Sarah Jacobs was recognized with an award at the Maryville College Celebration of Student Achievement. The event recognizes Maryville College students who exemplify academic excellence, campus leadership, career potential, and the Maryville College ideal of doing, good on the largest possible scale. A tenet laid forth by the college's founder, the Reverend Isaac Anderson. Congratulations, Sarah. Teacher Academy seniors had eight wonderful visitors last Friday. The Lebanon City Schools' family support and wellness team, consisting of Tracy Funk, Lynn Payne, Andy Chamberlain, Aubrey McClure, and four ladies from the ESC, visited our classroom and talked to the seniors about services provided, trauma care, attendance, and et cetera. It was a great visit, very well received by all.
I do want to point something out here. That group of people there, the family support and wellness team, it's a new cooperative. We've had those people before, right? We've had social worker and resource coordinator. We have a special education parent liaison, which is what Audrey McClure does. Andy Chamberlain works for us and the ESC doing truancy. There's a very collaborative approach, and we're seeing some good results in terms of improved attendance. And really, the goal of that is to figure out, work with families, sometimes in their homes, and figure out what are the barriers to kids coming to school? How can we support them? It's been a really good program and a very collaborative effort, and I think it was great that our Teachers Academy kids got to hear about the struggles and some of the things that lead to, you know, students having issues in school with attendance or poor performance, and it was a great learning opportunity for them, so.
All right, and then upcoming events, we have another NHS blood drive on April 25th, and then everyone's excited for AP testing from May 5th to the 16th.
It's the most wonderful time of the year. Thank you, Isaac.
Item D, Superintendent Report. Mr. Severs?
Yeah, I just wanted to talk about the, maybe making our community aware here, getting any input from board that you make or questions you may have. I sent information about a week ago about a new program that we're going to be starting next year at Lebanon High School called the Drake Passage. I did not come up with the name, but I think the name's pretty fitting. If you go home and research the Drake Passage, it's a very treacherous nautical path, apparently. And it talks about, you know, uncharted waters and have careful planning, and I saw it was really appropriate for what we're trying to do here. Mayor may not be aware that the ESC, the Warren County ESC, is closing their alternative school that's been housed out by the Career Center. So we figured out that in probably January, February, and we've been trying to come up with solutions. We have 14 students there currently. And so what we're going to be doing is bringing back those services to Lebanon High School, not calling it alternative school, really expanding the purpose for it. But a lot of the students that are currently at the alternative school will be able to return back to Lebanon High School. We'll be using what was originally built as the alternative school classroom. And so if you're at the high school, beyond the weight room, there's that new hallway where the sprint track and things were added there beyond the cafeteria. There's actually a classroom at the end of the hallway, has its own self-contained restroom inside the classroom, has an outside entrance that comes off the back student parking lot. It's currently being used for Teacher Academy, but when it was originally built, it was to house the Warrior Academy that we had previously at Lebanon High School. So this program is going to be a partial-day program, so students will come for a portion of the day. We're going to have to staff it. There are some savings associated with not paying the ESC to run this program. This past year, we were paying over $400,000 to the ESC for services. We think we can do that for that amount, or actually less, even with hiring new staff to run the program. And we were really excited about the opportunity. We lost a partnership with a program called Graduation Alliance. We've been using it for the last two years and had really good success with students doing some online curriculum work through them. So we'll be using that academically. And I shared with all the board members, you know, sort of a presentation and understanding about the program, and we're currently looking for staffing. I just want to make sure that I said that publicly. We'll be sending out notification to the families of all the students who are currently attending the alternative school this week and letting them know within the next several weeks, somebody from Lebanon High School, their assistant principal, will be arranging a time to meet with them about what the best option is for them next year. Did anybody have any questions on the information I sent out previously about this program?
Are you talking to the, I'm assuming the staff at the ESC is being displaced?
Yeah, so some of them, one of the teachers was just in the room. She actually is retiring. Mrs. Collier's wife was one of the teachers in the program. And so that retirement happened, so some of it they're taking care of because of attrition and things like that. Currently, the jobs are posted internally because they are teaching positions, so our staff has the first opportunity to discuss those positions. We'll also be looking just to see what the best fit is if we don't have any internal interest. We will, right now, the plan is for a teacher, an aide in the classroom, and then hiring a dean of students, which would be a teacher's salary, but having some administrative responsibilities to support that program, also do some additional things in the high school in addition to that. So we'll have two teachers and an aide, again, for less cost than what we were spending previously. The ESC made available an option for us if we didn't have a place that we could, you know, educate those kids that are currently attending there, but it's really cost prohibitive. You know, right now, we're paying around $15,000 or so for those kids attending the alternative school per student. The cost going into next year, if we want them to attend a learning center program, which is what their options would be, would be closer to $70,000 per kid. So obviously, we need to come up with some solutions locally for that. We think it's also an opportunity for us to expand with some students, and you know, we're calling this as a Tier Two and a Tier Three. So behaviorally, maybe the traditional school setting's not working for them, right? Could be somebody coming back from a medical absence that's long and needs to kind of get caught up before they can start fresh at a semester. It could be a lot of different ways that we utilize the program. In that Tier Two approach, the goal would be obviously reintegrating them back into the high school at some point in time at a semester break or something in the future. Tier Three are for the students that we would traditionally think about sending to an outplacement where the behavior is such that it was really, they were not responding to things internally, and it was a distraction to others. So, you know, we're going to build the program. We think we have some capacity to even grow it beyond our current numbers. And right now, it would serve just Lebanon High School students. Everybody in the county is having to shuffle and figure some things out. Little Miami added a program last year. Springboro, Franklin, Lanesville, we're all trying to figure out what to do going forward. So we think it's a really good option for us. I'm excited about the program. I think it's going to be great, actually, and better than what we're currently getting out of the ESC program. So, any other questions about that? If you got something else?
No.
I do want to say one more thing. I did send the Board of Education an email last week. This is on the list, but the United States Department of Education noticed that was sent to all states asking for certification that we were complying as a school district with the requirements of Title VI and a recent Supreme Court ruling against Harvard University. It was really about Title VI, which is the Civil Rights Act of 1964, and it talks about anti-discrimination and making sure that none of our programs discriminate against anybody for any race or ethnicity or color. It was really what the majority of this certification was about. I've reviewed with our legal counsel all of our policies. We don't have any programs that would not be in compliance with this law. We've reviewed all of our, you know, student recognition scholarships that are given out and things like that to make sure that there's nothing that would be an issue for us as a district. So it's my intention to sign this and send it back. I will share with all the board the signed copy of this four-page document as well. We were encouraged by our legal counsel to wait. There's currently being challenged in some other states the requirement for this, but we're going to submit that in the next couple of days to make sure we're in a bit ahead of the deadline. Noticeably, in the news in the last couple of days, there are some school districts in the area or in southwest Ohio that said they were not going to sign this and send it back. We have nothing that we are doing at Lebanon City Schools. That would be an issue for us to not sign this and submit it. So just want to make sure I say that. Because I'm signing it, it's my name on it, but it's on behalf of Lebanon City Schools. I want to make sure I brought that up. Any questions about that?
That was what you covered in the email from last Monday.
I covered that email from last Monday, and it was in response to the Department of Justice Dear Colleague Letter written by President Trump, and then also the anti-DEI information that was sent out by them as well.
And it's still due April 24th.
It's still due to the federal government. By then, the state had put a different date in prior to that for us to submit things to. And again, legal law firms in Ohio were encouraging people to wait to make sure that everything was reviewed and they knew exactly what they're asking us to sign.
Okay.
That there's nothing hidden in there that's going to cause us to be, you know, have any problems or anything, and there hasn't. So we're good.
Thank you, Mr. Severs. Moving on to Item E, Board Committee Reports. Ms. Dalton, the floor is yours.
Okay.
Let me get this pulled back up here. Sorry.
Do you notice that hanging basket? Okay, we're into April as we wind down the school year, and the, there's a lot going on in the schools for the next six weeks.
Apparently, flowers are blooming too, Mr. Kutchin.
Yes, this is.
I don't know.
One of the best-looking hanging baskets from the Black Barn. I had to get something in the spring into the, yeah, exactly. Something in the spring in that first slide. Okay, so what's going on at Bowman? There was an in-house field trip, so the Cincinnati Museum Center came to the school and did some hands-on workshops for the kids. The topics were on, we're talking like kindergarten, first, second crater. So there was bugs, animals, and gardens, and there was lots of activity going on, and it looks like they all had a good time. There's tons of pictures there.
A lot of exciting squeals that day at school as well, right?
Yeah.
Snakes and frogs and...
Yes. Yeah. Okay, next slide. At Bowman, they had an event where they brought the parents in to allow the students to read their stories to them. They were in by the students. And then after that, they had a music concert. So it was a real good way for the students to display to the parents and also for the parents to come in the school and see what's going on. So, and be able to look around, ask questions, meet the teachers. I think these are great events that they do, and I just want to thank the teachers and staff that took the evening hours out to do this and put... Okay, next slide. All right, the fourth graders at Donovan, and we want to say thanks to the Lebanon City Schools PTO, because without them, a lot of these types of programs would not be possible. And they brought in a, the head of the foreign agent, and he did a presentation on all of the artifacts at foreign agent and just the ways of life of the history, and students got hands-on and the ability to ask questions, got some history lessons, and kind of probably coordinated with some of their school studies. So these things kind of bring the education to life, let's say, with these types of events. Okay, and then we had a group from Donovan, I believe it was. Was that right?
Yeah, Donovan.
Yes, they all went to the Reds Stadium and got a tour, and usually, they combine some kind of an educational event, whether it's a little bit of at-their-level statistics or how things work in the ballfield. I think that they got to see the Broadcasting Center and all sorts of things, but they had a fun team-building event down there. I'm sure the buses were loud.
Some of our staff members went as parents, and it was fun to talk to them afterwards. They had to go in the clubhouse and the Hall of Fame, and they learned about some really great things. It was a great opportunity, so.
Okay, and then this was a nice slide to see, because this was very intermediate, and this took place in March, so probably the first day that it broke like 50 or 60 degrees or something. And so they took the math class outside for them to learn equations on speed and distance and velocity and all sorts of their math formulas put into action and burn off some energy and get the kids out of style for that.
Mr. Lane, my, our students never had that much fun doing mathematics, did they?
No.
Yeah. We didn't see smiles when we taught high school mathematics, I promise.
Okay. Again, more programs and hands-on creative thinking, not just like answering questions on computers, which is really great to see. This took place at Berry, and the students were learning about planets, and they all created different types of projects, whether it was 3D projects or skits, or whether it was news reports, or all sorts of different ways to present to their classmates. They learn public speaking, they learn creativity, they put what they get out of books into writing. So I think that, I mean, it's just nice that our teachers are doing these types of things, because it takes more effort than just kind of following a book and answering questions on a tablet.
Some great authentic learning.
Okay, here's more. Hands-on at Lebanon High School, and this was the geology students. They went all the way up to Ohio Caverns, and they're learning about this in the classroom. They got to see live and probably take samples and do different tests and probably even wrote a report at the end. But again, they're getting out there to see what they're learning and how it can be used practically. So I think it's just expanding their imagination and creativity and communication skills. And the career English class had our Lebanon mayor, Mayor Messer, and a local historian who's written a lot of books on Lebanon, John Zimkus, in to learn about the history of Lebanon. And they also were able to submit names to name a park, and I think there were 100 submissions or something of different names, and those are going to go to vote at city council, but probably so that students could see how a city runs. You know, look at the city planning and what they have to do to think about putting together a subdivision. So, you know, water, electricity, drainage, the whole bit.
So just some background, this is actually students with disability in an inclusion classroom. And they, two of our names that were submitted from this class were actually selected. I don't know if the city council has voted on it yet or not, so I don't know that I'm, I don't know if I'm allowed to share or not, but our students were able to name the bike path that will be extended through the, or a trail of some sort, and then there's a park that's a part of this new development. And so several of the students from this class had an opportunity, and then we'll have a park that they helped name and a trail. And again, just the students that are in there, for them to be a part of that and have a say, that's, that was a big deal for them. So it was a great program, and you see Ms. Lauren Miller there in the back. A great opportunity for these kids, so.
I think that's an example of just how the community in the school kind of come together for these things and create everlasting experiences and memories for these students that will become, you know, future citizens. I mean, they're citizens now, but productive citizens in the city. So this next one, I thought, was really creative and really unique. The students read a book. The author did not finish the book because of a terminal illness, but the students were able to each write their own ending to this book, and then they were able to put all of those different endings together into their own Lebanon-class book. And it's, the story is, it's about how you live your life, and it just gives them, reflects on their own experiences, their values, their lessons, and they hope, what they hope to pass on. So again, it's, the teachers are getting very creative and putting together, these are examples of really good things that they're doing, so we appreciate that. And we want to honor our J-Rotsey students that come in here on a monthly basis, but there are a lot of students in that program. And Lebanon got exceeds standards or expectation standards in their final review against other programs around the state. And I mean, it looks like we have one of the best J-Rotsey programs out there, which says a lot about our students and the values and what they're trying to do to give back. And one of the last things is we'd like to honor Kathy Vaughn and Amy Paul in their Project Excellence winners, and they've been selected by their peers, I believe.
Yeah. Yeah, they were nominated. Community members, students, staff members, administrators can nominate people. Both of them had a lot of nominees that came in separately and individually, and then there's a committee that gets together with the Area Progress Council, and they select from the nominees. And so I think we had 20, over 20 different staff members nominated this year, and Kathy Vaughn, P.E. teacher at Lebanon Junior High, she's actually going to be in DC leading the Washington DC trip during the recognition ceremony, so I'm going to have her come next month at the board meeting, because her mom is, wants to make sure she sees her get the award, and I told her we'll take a picture next month and make sure her mom gets to see that too. And then Amy Paul. And so then there's a ceremony coming up soon at the Career Center. All of you should have received an invitation. If you want to attend that, then let Jessica know. That would be great.
Thank you, Ms. Dalton. I think that was probably your best report in three years.
There was just a lot going on.
He had a picture of himself in there, that's why.
Yeah.
Well, it can't always be about you, Mr. Lane. Hard as you try.
Yes, exactly. But there's just so much going on in closing down the school year, and I didn't even get to the sports, but just, it's, a lot of good things are happening.
The book report, I attended that and listened to the kids read, and then the teacher gave me a book, and I was surprised in reading the book, what the kids were talking about, you know, just...
The depth, yeah.
The depth, and they're so great. They were having me sign their book, and it was, it was really, it was great, so. All right, moving on to our CAT Committee Representative, Mr. Gliotti.
Mrs. Dalton, it's tough to follow right there, especially since we did not have a meeting, but I am pleased to say that we will have an Advisory Council meeting this next month, and it will be prior to the board meeting, so we'll have an update at the next, at the May board meeting.
And we'll be doing the five-year forecast.
Five years, yes.
Love it. Legislative Liaison, Ms. Cope?
Once again, it's hard to follow, Mrs. Dalton, because for me, the legislative report, both chambers of the Ohio General Assembly are on spring break. They were last week, this week, so things have kind of slowed down at the state level. Things should pick back up starting next week. The only thing that, next week, they should start with the Senate formally beginning budget deliberations, so, and taking public testimony. So really, the only thing that I would say is, the Ohio Department of Education and Workforce is, has opened up the public comment for rules regarding the John Peterson Special Need Scholarship, and there's multiple things in there that if, people that like to research that and make public comment. Also, the Autism Scholarship Program is also up for public comment, so you can go on the Ohio Department of Education and Workforce site and check out how you can make public comment, if that's something that you're interested in. Other than that, just keep your eyes on the budget deliberations.
Karen and I will try to give you updates if we hear things, and I think we'll talk a little bit maybe tonight during her update, or at some point in time, about the House and what their budget included. The state funding formula portion of it kept us whole, but the property tax reform that they included in there is particularly problematic, so I think we'll talk a little bit about that as we go. We need to make sure that, and I've already spoken to Senator Wilson about it, and hope that we can have some input along the way and what that would look like. I think we all agree that we need to do some things to reform property taxes. I think that the growth in the last several years has been concerning to residents, and I mean, all of us included, but we want to make sure that whatever they do, it's thoughtful and it's actually going to be a benefit to taxpayers long-term and not just a one-year solution, which I think is what the House is recommending right now, is like a one-year reprieve basically for a lot of people. But we, you know, how do we, how do we adjust to that and make sure it's something that's meaningful long-term? So again, when we share more information with that, and we'll try to keep you up to date as it goes into the Senate.
Thank you, Ms. Cope. And finally, Warren County Career Center Liaison, Mr. Lane.
Yeah, two, kind of two things to talk about there. Number one, we had a contingent, or had a group that went to Europe to look at, we'll call it career training, career education, the way they do things overseas, and they are quite a bit advanced from where we are with kids as early as eighth grade getting experience in different careers. We had some representation there as well, Mrs. Brooks and Mrs. Coleman, but we're still getting more feedback of what all they learned, but it was pretty eye-opening, the differences. I would say that the Career Center here is well on track to getting there, and very proud of what they're doing, but Mr. King, the superintendent, said it was a very educational trip for him and his group. And the other thing, the other big news is we did hire a, an approved, a new treasurer, Katrina Hillard, coming from the Shared Resource Center. She is, she was assigned to be the treasurer at both Miamisburg and Brookville, so I think it was in March, she had nine board meetings to attend. So we're giving her a little bit of reprieve, and not to mention that she lives about five minutes away from the Career Center, and I think almost an hour away from Brookville, where she was going twice a week. So we are excited to have her on board, and that's it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lane. Agenda number six, I need a motion to approve the minutes of our regular board meeting for March the 17th, 2025. Any comments, corrections, or questions on the minutes from our last meeting? Mrs. Irvin?
Mr. Gliotti?
Yes.
Mrs. Dalton?
Yes.
Mr. Lane?
Yes.
Mr. McCutcheon?
Yes.
Mrs. Cope?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Number seven, financial consent items. I'm looking for a motion to approve financial consent items A through I.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Irving?
Okay, we are through the month of March, so this is the last month that you will see this particular forecast used as our baseline. In May, I will present to you the new May updates. A lot has shifted, so I'm curious to see how that will play out, but for right now, we're still looking at the forecast from November. We're nine months through the year, right on track. So our gray, that gray bar is our actual for now, as of the end of March. Currently, we're at 131 days of anticipated operating cash, sorry, currently, we are at 131 days of operating cash. We anticipate ending the year with 113 days, target being around 120. Now, Isaac's alluded to some things going on in legislature. We will talk some more in the next month or so about some of these days operating cash and how that's going to play out, or potentially could play out, but just keep, keep in mind that that is something that they're talking about right now in the legislature.
So just to interject there, the House budget said that districts having more than 30% carryover balance in there at the end of their fiscal year, would the Budget Commission and the county would lower tax collection in order to bring the district's carryover balance back to 30%? 113 days is like 31%, so that's about $700,000 or so for us over that 30%, which they would bring it down below what we would collect, so they're going to adjust collections. That's what the budget proposal was, which is why I've seen that's a property tax reform. We're pretty close to 30%, which is where they want us to be, but knowing what we know about that and just what we think would happen, they would short for the year to bring us back to 30%, then they'd have to readjust the next year for, so for taxpayers, it's a one-year, it's a one-year tax break, sort of like we had the tax holiday in the county a couple of years ago, that nobody really felt until the taxes went back up the next year, and then they were mad that taxes went back up the next year. So we have to try to advocate somewhere in the, in the middle there for what's real reform, but just to keep in mind with the 30 days, 113 is slightly over that, so.
Would they do that for like a 1% difference?
I don't know how.
That's like, like very miniscule for the amount of money and the amount of trouble to...
Especially since we're deficit spending, is our argument right now. Now, there are some places in the state that are much higher than 30% carryover, and I think that's...
But that's further early into their levies.
Could levy cycle.
When you think about us, our district, a couple of years ago, we were higher than 113, but we also knew we were about to hit deficit spending, and every year, we spent more. Because we had had some of those property tax changes, the emergency levies, we had incurred more collection than we had spent. Well, now, we're hitting that first year where we're spending more, but still, if we go with that 30%, it's still looking like we have too much. Even though we're spending more than we're receiving, that magic 30% is still that marker, so we don't know how to anticipate what they'll do with that.
There hasn't been a whole lot of guidance on what exactly it would look like, but our understanding is, yes, if you're over 30%, the Tax Commission is going to collect less taxes than what's voted, to make sure you, brings you back down to that point in time.
Well, then they need to fix the issue, because the way it's set up today, you collect more upfront as the, and then it's there when you need it. So as of right now, the way it looks, you need one-year levies to get exactly what you need every year.
Yep, correct.
Or you're going to just spend a whole bunch of money that you don't need to spend, so you can go under 30%.
Both of those things are true, right? And we're thinking about the tax fatigue, the levy fatigue that we had, you know, three, four years ago, where we were asking for a renewal every year, and those were renewals, wasn't always new money, but under this situation, I think districts... wasn't always new money, but under this situation, I think districts are going to be required to go ask for money. We would be required in that situation to go ask for money sooner, if we were not going to, you know, have another year of collecting at that rate. We'd, we'd be required to ask for money sooner, which is not a benefit to our taxpayers, right? It's the opposite effect. The second thing would be, if you're trying to keep at that place, and you're trying to generate the same amount of money every year that you're spending, which is what they want us to do, right? Taxes for us are primary, Karen's going to get into it, I don't want to steal her thunder, right? We're primarily property tax funded. That's not how the state budget is funded. State budget is funded on income tax and sales tax, and I don't know what else, right? Income tax and sales tax primarily. Well, they spend every year what they bring in for the most part, and set some aside in savings. That's, we don't, we don't, we're not getting tax increases every year. People's salaries are typically going up from one year to the next, and when you make more money, you spend more money. So if income taxes go up and sales taxes go up, then the state generates more revenue that they have to spend. That's not how school funding works when it's primarily on property taxes, or we need to ask for levies. And so, part of it is, I think, the lack of understanding of how school funding works, and that's one of the things we're trying to figure out ways to educate our legislators on, and I've been working, you know, with our two elected officials pretty heavily in the last month or two, because just helping tell our story, so.
Well, Senator Wilson, being a former school board member, certainly understands.
He's well aware of how school funding works.
Yeah. When I read this, I thought of Ronald Reagan, when he said, "The scariest statement is, 'I'm from the government and I'm here to help.'" So, sorry, Karen.
So, before we get, delve really deep into that, I just wanted to give you the nine-month actual data. So, looking at nine of 12 months, we're looking at around 75%. Currently, collections at revenues, we're at 82%. We have about one more month of property tax collections, and we should be really on target for where we're going to be, but that will be higher than that percentage, if you remember. And then expenses, slightly less. So I think I say this every year, but you want revenues slightly higher, you want, I want expenses slightly less, because you're showing you're conservative on both ends, right? I don't want us to run into a situation where we're overspending and not expecting to do that. So, we're doing great as far as actuals. I tried to give you a quarter three update, just taking a look year over year where we're at this, this last run. Currently, with revenues, we're at, we have received 59 million. It's about a 6% increase from what we got last year. So specifically, I know they're very tiny print there, but specifically, you're looking at the largest percentage in over other revenues, and then right under that is property tax. State funding increased by a tiny, tiny dollar amount. On the expense side, we're looking at, we've spent about 54 million, and that's about a 7% increase from last year. Primarily, you see the biggest shift there is down, is 12% in the other expenses. So, just a note to self, other revenue, high, other expenses, low, so those are counteracting each other. But also, the next highest, which this has been the trend for the last few years, is the purchased services and our materials. Those expensive, those expenses have simply increased. We have a lot of needs, so the services are, are rising, right? We, we have a lot of explanation for why those services are needing to increase, but also just literally cost. The amount of students using them, plus the cost to provide them, has increased.
So think, so think about that, a purchased service would be an example of the Learning Center student I talked about earlier. We're paying $15,000 to send them to the alt-school, that's a purchased service. We're spending $70,000 to send a student to the Learning Center, that's a purchased service. And those costs have gone up dramatically in all service providers, because the level of the students needing those services has, has increased, so.
Looking into the next quarter, of course, you know, we'll be presenting the May forecast. Most significantly, I'm, I'm curious to see how the property tax changes will play out. I'll try to run some scenarios, but ultimately, when I run that forecast, I'm going to run it as of what I know today. So, I'll, we are constantly looking at these changes, the potential changes, but what I present in the forecast is what I know as of today. So every time I do a forecast update, I tell you, this is going to change tomorrow. So just understand that even though I'm giving you my best guess, I have no idea what the legislature will actually shake out to be. So, and, and that leads to our financial highlights. We did successfully negotiate, depending on your views, tonight, with the bargaining unit, our third of three agreements, so depending on your vote tonight, that, those will be included in that forecast. And the biggest shift we see right now, we've got economy shifts, so prices, how much do things cost? How much does it cost to get them here? And then, of course, all the, the changes that are happening legislatively, and you'll see in my next few slides, this is not a small deal for us. So if you want to go to the next slide, I started with the small, the smallest slice that's being impacted. The smallest slice for us is our federal. So I gave you a graph, and this is looking as of June last year, so this is a full school year's worth of data. As of June last year, federal funding, total funding for the district is about 6%. The next lowest is our other category, it's at 2%. So 6%, this includes things for students who qualify for Medicare. This includes reimbursements from the federal government for student breakfast, lunch. These are all of our federal grants, IDEA, the titles. This also, last year specifically, included ESER funding, and we've had a lot of discussion about ESER funding, but that's what goes into this number of the 6%. Now, on the next slide, I give you some things that we're looking at, right? So, they've proposed eliminating the Department of Education on a federal level. What does that mean? We don't know. We don't know what that means yet. They've also proposed taking away funding for, Isaac talked about earlier, signing off the waiver, certain programs, if you have programs that don't meet their criteria, well, they're going to take your funding away. They've also talked about just cutting funding for specific programs, so that might look like no more food reimbursements. These are all in the talks. We don't know the potential impact, but the potential impact, if it occurs, could be significant. And then, of course, ESER was one-time funding. It was a big chunk of money. They told every district, they told every government entity, make sure you don't do personnel here, this is a one-time impact. Gratefully, I'm grateful to have walked in, and we did not do that. We had used it for personnel, but the personnel was budgeted also in future years to come out of the general fund. So we're covered there, and I'm grateful for that. That is an impact, we don't get that money anymore. So on a federal perspective, a lot going on here.
So, one thing to point out about your second bullet point, we currently don't have any programs where we're receiving federal money for DEI programs. Those are things that are on the list that they have said they're going to not fund going forward, where some federal programs before were requiring some sort of diversity, equity, inclusion type of system and program. So we don't have anything like that, but these, these are the things that we're monitoring and tracking. I just want to make sure I clarified that before we go, so.
Can you give a question for you? On ESER, what are a few of the larger ESER programs?
Our primary focus was intermediate, or the specialists. So, kids that are targeted with learning needs through the COVID intervention specialists, basically, are the title.
And we added, we added tutors and coaches and things like that as well. So during the COVID pandemic, one of the things they did, we had fewer kids that were in school that first year, so they kept staff, but they paid for tutors, and so kids to deal with the learning loss for COVID. And so, we did some facility things as well along the way, but most of it, primarily what Lebanon spent their money on was, which is probably one of the reasons that we continue to have growth in our general fund balance as well, was we moved staff off of general fund towards ESER, and then budgeted to bring them back in the future. So that's one of the ways that we were able to extend not needing levies for longer.
Okay. So our second biggest pot is our state foundation formula funding. So the state funds us about 32%. Again, this is total revenue. Usually when I'm talking to you guys about numbers, I'm talking about general fund only. In these examples, I'm talking all district funding. So we're talking about just basic aid unrestricted grants, we're talking about the rollback and homestead exemption programs that they offer, we're talking about funding for certain groups of kids, so those kids who fall in the economically disadvantaged, or the DPIA, the disadvantaged pupil. We're also talking about things like career tech, English learning, student success, wellness, some of those programs they've developed over the last few years, that's all state-funded. There are also some restricted grants that we've applied for, whether it's competitive or not competitive, that are specifically designed to meet a specific need. So this is 32%. So you remember federally, we were at 6%, another 32% is our state funding. So what are we looking at here? This is some of the areas that we're very concerned about. There, every, every budget cycle, they come to the Fair School Funding Plan with, which if you remember when this was implemented, they did a bipartisan, they had a bipartisan initiative to research this out, vet it out, they had a lot of research going in behind it, tracking all of the school's data. So it was really a, a funding mechanism to try to improve funding across the state. So you, you were having some of the wealthier districts get a, an amount of funding that didn't make sense when you compared it with a district who was not as wealthy, right? So they proposed this Fair School Funding Plan. They initially said, "We can't do this in a single year, we need to, to stretch this out over quite a few years." Well, every two years, they come back and say, "Okay, where are we at? Can we do the next phase of this formula?" They're, we're back there, right? We're at the, the budget cycle. Some of the things that they've talked about, we won't know until they actually approve the budget, but some of the things they have talked about is changing those allocations, not using the, the plan itself. They've talked about moving the allocation, so some years, they've increased specific sections, so I'll just make this up. Career tech is an initiative, I'm going to fund that more than I had originally planned. The other big thing that has impacted us is there are inputs, is what they're called, that they use to calculate how much money we get. Those inputs are based on actual costs from school districts. Now, as you imagine, at least for us, our expenses are increasing every single year. This formula does not always increase those inputs accordingly with what they're actually doing. This is one of those years where they're proposing to leave it as-is, using old inputs, but increasing, changing our revenue. So, we've talked a lot about the, the state formula is based on property tax wealth in addition to some of these other things, so as our wealth increases, our funding decreases, but our expenses are staying at that prior year. So they're not, they're not keeping up. So it's, it's one of the things that we are concerned with. Of course, expansion of private school voucher programs, they've discussed that as well, and then we've talked a bit already about the proposed cap, so making sure that we only keep a certain dollar value in our, in our reserves. And I thought this was interesting. One of the things that I hope to bring you, or at least to the CAT Committee in May, the Auditor's State's Office, not quite 10 years ago, but close, created some financial health indicators for local governments. They have now done the same thing for school districts, which is pretty exciting. It's a way that they go in and track, are we on track? Are we somebody close to fiscal watch? And some of those, in, there's like 16 indicators that they look at, and I'm going to read straight from this article, they haven't presented the data with us, they'll do that May 1st, but this is a description of some of those indicators. And this, this description says, "The larger the reserve, the better the entity is able to absorb in the short term the impact of sudden revenue loss or significant increases in operating costs and begin planning financial adjustments." So the Auditor's Office says here, "The better your reserves, the better you're able to handle, withstand financial uncertainty." The proposal is to cap that reserve. So it's an interesting difference that we have here, right? Different philosophies. And I think what Isaac said earlier is really valid. We recognize that changes need to happen, and we're on board with that, but what we are asking is, do it thoughtfully. It, it's what our district upholds, right? Do this reflectively, thoughtfully, research it, and do it in a way that's not political in nature, not with an agenda, except for our agenda to educate kids across the state. That was interesting. And then, of course, our largest, our largest revenue source, property taxes. Again, this is not just general fund, this is all district funding. 60% of our income comes from our local residents paying. Now, this could be residential, this could be commercial, and it can be industrial, so all three forms of property tax. We also get much smaller portions, but we get tuition, so we have a preschool, we charge tuition, we have some special education that charges tuition. Fees, so fees that we collect on behalf of other districts that we're transporting for. Athletic participation, that goes to cover parts of the supplemental costs. These are much smaller buckets, right, than property tax, but all of this goes in one big bucket. And then, of course, the revenues from our tax abatement. Anytime the city, or the county, or the township goes, makes an economic development agreement with a local business, if they give a tax abatement, that impacts us. So those are all local revenues. So we've already talked about two of our impacts, this is our third. The potential impacts here, obviously, the state has been looking for many years, at this point, several years, I guess, not many, but many of the last few. Property tax changes, what does that look like? Some of our elderly population can't afford these increases, so how do we help those folks? For the local person, "I can't afford that big of an increase, so how can you help me?" Those kind of questions that they're, they're trying to ask. Again, we're asking that they review them, we're great with that. Just do it separate, do it thoughtfully, separate from the budget bill. That way, we know the impact, and we can, we can do a better job predicting across the board what's going on. The other thing here is, they've talked several times about changing those tax abatements, and how does that work? Sometimes the school has a say, sometimes the school doesn't have a say. So how do those things impact? And then, of course, we know that as our property tax values increase, our state funding decreases. So a lot of information there, just really, here are our funding sources, here are potential impacts that might be coming on, and so just a, a word to the public, this is something that we are monitoring, this is, we spend a lot of time looking at these, listening to potential fallout of what this scenario might do, or this scenario might do. But we also would ask, as a population, as a board, we would ask that our, our representation out in the governments, look at funding our kids. That's, that's why we're here, for our kids, and whatever that may look like, great, we're, we're willing to work with that, but really just, we need to create a stable environment so that our teachers know they have jobs, our kids know they have buildings to come to that aren't going to fall apart, and they're provided a great education, because we want them to be in a leadership role, in a community role, when they're working adults, that is impactful, just like we had. So, that's what we're asking. Lot of information there. Any questions?
Thank you, Mrs. Irvin. I will go ahead and read the rest of the consent items. B is a list of monthly reports that are in your board packet. C, amended appropriations. D is an amended certificate of estimated resources. E is an activity, purpose, and budget statement submitted by Mrs. Lamb and Mrs. Murphy for the LHS after-prom. F is a list of donations, and we really appreciate them. I would like to point out one, that Love Like JJ, for over $10,000. I'm assuming that Smoke is a dog.
Smoke is a dog.
Okay.
Yep, so Lebanon High School has a therapy dog that came to us from Love Like JJ, it's a foundation out of Mason, and they And they supported and paid for the dog, the training of the dog. And Smoke has been at the high school for a portion of this year. Our counselors first kind of got in contact with Love Like JJ after some student tragedy that we had at the high school. Mason brought their therapy dog in with our students during the grieving process, and they saw the benefit that the dog had in the building. And so that's a significant donation from their organization and then the training for the dog as well. And so it's housed with one of our counselors. It goes home with her in the evening. And then she brings it back. We have multiple handlers at the high school that then, the dog gets out and kind of is a part of things in the school building, but also if we needed to kind of de-escalate some situations with some things with students. It's a great dog. So thanks a lot to them.
Yep, and thanks to Acapulco Restaurant, the Warren County Historical Society for some really big donations. Those are much, much appreciated. Item G is approved funds for staff appreciation. H is approve the revised exempt pay grade and schedule. And I think the only change was our EMIS coordinator, which Ms. Irvin touched on on your April the 14th email, which was last Monday. And I is a then and now. Any questions, comments? We good, Ms. Irvin?
Mrs. Dalton?
Yes.
Mr. McCutcheon?
Yes.
Mrs. Coke?
Yes.
Mr. Gliotti?
Yes.
Mr. Lane?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Number eight is a public records request, and we do acknowledge that we received two of the PRRs. They are also listed in your board packet. Number nine, policies. I need a motion to approve the first reading of the following 29 policies. Okay, I'll do that again. I need a motion to approve the first reading of the following 29 policies.
I'll second it.
Thank you both.
We-
Questions or comments?
We sent out all the policies to you ahead of time. Some of them are very minor changes because something changed in the law and we changed a word or two. They updated it as they went. Some of them are more substantial. You also, I think, this time got the overview packet. So if you want to read that first in the synopsis and then realize, and then go to ones you want to read. It's the first reading. If you have any questions in the next month or anything that you'd like to discuss at the next month, let me know and we'll come prepared to do that.
And the packet from the Ola had several policy recommendations that we're not doing on our list either. So it might have to cross-reference those. No questions? Good? Ms. Irvin?
Mr. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Coke?
Yes.
Mr. Gliotti?
Yes.
Mr. McCutcheon?
Yes.
Mrs. Dalton?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Number 10, other educational. I'm looking for a motion to approve items A, B, and C, please.
Second.
Mr. Severs, you want to touch on any of these?
These, we have amplified Desmos mathematics for grade seventh and eighth and an adoption of a reveal math for geometry at Lebanon High School. I do know we've had several staff members piloting these programs for the last year and providing input on it. We're well due on some adoptions of new materials in these subjects. And it gets some transition in continuity between what we're doing at lower grades. And then zoology is a program we're adding at the high school. And so obviously, we need a material and a book for that. So I think there's some really good things in that reveal math for geometry. I'm excited about it. So I think it's great.
Any other questions? Ms. Irvin?
Mrs. Coke?
Yes.
Mr. Gliotti?
Yes.
Mrs. Dalton?
Yes.
Mr. McCutcheon?
Yes.
Mr. Lane?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Number 11, personnel. I'm going to need a motion to approve items A through N, the educational items.
So moved.
Second. And I will go ahead and read through these. Number A is a list of resignations. B is employment, pending acceptable BCI/FBI background checks. C is substitute employment. D is a list of supplementals. E is a list of supplemental volunteer coaches. F is a board resolution for the employment of non-licensed coaches. G is a list of change of status. H is a list of volunteers, which we greatly appreciate. I is new tutors, pending acceptable BCI/FBI background checks. J is a list of seasonal workers, I'm assuming for this summer.
Yeah, those are some recent graduates that are going to come back and work with our maintenance and custodial staff. Not all of them are, but four of those students are recent graduates. We've been doing this the last couple of years and allows us to maintain the, we maintain a lot of property, you know? And we can keep that in good order and not get out of control by using some of these younger college kids to do a lot of that work that allows our custodians to stay inside and get our buildings ready to go. So it's been a great, it's been a great change for us last couple summers.
K is leave of absence unpaid days. L is one extended hours. M is certified staff contracts. N is administrative staff contracts. Any questions, comments, concerns?
I have a question. The marching band director has an asterisk. What does that mean? Is that a typo?
Great question. Where do you see the asterisk?
Next to his director of marching bands asterisk.
Item D.
I was trying to look at the packet itself.
Director of marching bands.
I don't know exactly what the asterisk would mean. Zachary is the recommended new band teacher at Lebanon High School. I do know that, you know, obviously with all employees, we're starting them at step zero, bachelor step zero. It could be identifying that they, you know, something with that. Oh, I didn't know what that means. It's probably a copy. Mike, director of marching bands, when we look at the supplemental salary schedule, there's an asterisk beside it in the supplemental salary schedule. Because it was a change at one point in time, it was paid at a different rate. So the asterisk refers to something in the listing. And so there's probably a copy and paste error from there.
And then under L, extended hours for Jessica Linker?
So extended hours for Jessica Linker. That position is going to be, she is TSAL certified, so English is a second language. She also has a degree in background in social work. And so she'll be working as a parent liaison, working with our families that move here in terms of that. But the extended days is for the summer in preparation for school starting with the groups of families and individuals that move in over the summer. Try to make sure that we're prepared for school to start.
Makes sense. Thank you.
So that's prior to her beginning her official employment. So we approve up to a certain number of hours so she can work and do that job over the summer when typically teachers will not be doing that work.
Any other questions about personnel? Ms. Irvin, please.
Mrs. Coke?
Yes.
Mr. McCutcheon?
Yes.
Mrs. Dalton?
Yes.
Mr. Gliotti?
Yes.
Mr. Lane?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Number 12, other business. I'm going to need a motion to approve the agreement between the Ohio Association of Public School Employees and the Lebanon City Schools. I'm going to need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Severs, would you like to say something?
Yeah, I'll say something about that. So OPEC is a group of students, a group of employees that we have with three different bargaining units. OPEC represents our classified staff working with students in the building or in the building's school. Because I think of custodians, secretaries, aides.
You mean the ones who really run the buildings?
The ones who are really running the buildings, yes. And we, you know, it's, we're looking at where we were out of line with others in the market in terms of those positions, what was happening within the sector. One of the things we've looked at is, you know, over the last three or four years, as we think about employee costs going up, you know, it's happening everywhere, in every market and every sector. And so we needed to do some adjustments in this. We did some kind of one-time money and bumped several spots, but then also did some increases. Got us more marketable and competitive. One of the things we take as our approach typically when negotiating with employees is very rarely, if ever, do we want to be the one setting the market. And so we don't want to be the highest paid or the lowest paid in Warren County, right? And this keeps us consistent right there and competitive with others around us while, you know, not falling behind, and quite honestly, in some of those positions. And it was harder to get people and keep people as a result of it. We had fallen behind in some of those areas. And so I think this is a good sign on behalf of the school district to give a good agreement to these employees and hopefully will help us with some retention and some hiring in the future as well. So.
Anything else? Ms. Irvin?
Mrs. Dalton?
Yes.
Mr. Gliotti?
Yes.
Mrs. Coke?
Yes.
Mr. Lane?
Yes.
Mr. McCutcheon?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item 13, board comments. Mrs. Coke, anything you would like to add?
I have nothing this evening.
You have nothing this evening. Mr. Gliotti?
Just going back to Mrs. Irvin's report, I think that the word of the day is uncertainty. It's difficult for us to project very well and soundly finances, just as in business right now. We don't understand what tariffs mean. We don't understand what costs are going to do. So I think our schools are positioned very well to pivot. We have an awareness of all of our opportunities and all of our threats, where we're strong and where we need some improvement. And I think that's, in a time like this, that's the best position you can be in, is to be able to be aware and pivot. And I think that's what this team will do.
Ms. Dalton?
Yeah, I'd like to add to that. I think that where there's uncertainty, I think that we're in a good position because we've really kind of gotten in front of a lot of this. But I'm also confident, or at least also hopeful, that maybe some of the federal funds that are kind of locked up in some kind of a bureaucratic process will get potentially driven down to the state and then we'll be able to utilize those better than how it could have been utilized before with a number of layers above it. So, you know, where there's uncertainty, I think that we have good representation here in our county that they'll be looking out for us. And I think that we're putting up good numbers and we're definitely fiscally responsible. So I think that it will be coming out of this okay.
One thing I do want to say there is, one of the things we've heard at the federal level, right now, the intention is not that we would lose some of these services and funding. It would come to us in different ways and be distributed directly to the state to be distributed out to us. I think that what the intention is has to continue to be the end result as well, right? And so you're talking about getting rid of some of those layers. So that, I think that's the advocacy that we need to continue to have is we can't educate the growing increase in cost of students with disabilities at the rate that we are unless we have money coming in from the state and federal government to do so. And so I think that's worth, it's a valid point.
Mr. Lane?
I don't think I have any this month.
Well, I, you know, my comment is, I think as many people, if you're watching at home or re-watching this, in our board, we need to reach out to Senator Wilson and advocate, you know, for our kids and our students. Everything I read, I have concerns. I have concerns. But more important, I would like to congratulate my friend and colleague, Mr. Lane, on his award. And for those that don't know, not only am I board president, I am Mike Lane's personal whipping boy. And he has taught me a lot since I have been on the board. And the amount of money and work and effort that him and his wife Amy put in, you deserve recognition every year, sir. Congratulations.
Totally agree.
Number 14, executive session. We need to enter into executive session for the purpose to consider the appointment, employment, or compensation of a public employee or official. May I have a motion to enter into executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. The board will now enter into executive session at 7:00.
We need a vote.
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry. May I have a motion? Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Irvin?
Mr. McCutcheon?
Yes.
Mr. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Coke?
Yes.
Mrs. Dalton?
Yes.
Mr. Gliotti?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right. The board will now enter into executive session at 7:31. No action will be taken during or after this session. You're more than welcome to stay until, you know, we're back in a couple hours. Thank you all for joining us.